You're watching BCTV. We're all about Branford. You're watching BCTV, Branford Government Television, a service of Branford Community Television. This program is brought to you in part through the support of the town of Branford.
Welcome. I'll call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for June 17th, 2020 to order. First, before we get started, I would just ask everybody for a moment of silence for passing of Selectman Joe Higgins. Joe was a great friend to many and was served as selectman for over six and a half years alongside with me. Those who know Joe know he was very proud of the fact he was from the Bronx and his his many years, decades of service to New York. However, he was also honored to serve as selectman for the town of Branford. He was very, his family called Branford their home. They were very fond of this community. And I can tell you, he was truly honored by the support that he received from the community of Branford. So with that, just a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Item one, to consider and if appropriate approve the minutes from June 3rd, 2020. I put those forward in a form of a motion.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Selectman Dunbar. Any adjustments, changes, comments? All right, hearing on Selectman Cosgrove in favor, aye.
Selectman Dunbar in favor, aye.
All right, thank you. Just for a reminder of everybody, this is a Zoom meeting, online meeting. Prior to speaking, please state your name. Thank you. To consider and if appropriate approve a inter-community agreement between the cities and towns of Berlin, Branford, Bristol, Burlington, Hartland, New Britain, Plainville, Plymouth, Prospect, Seymour, Southington, Warren, Washington, and Waukesha, and a resolution authorizing the first selectman to enter into the restated inter-community agreement regarding the BRRFOC that requires approval by the legislative body. This agreement will replace the current agreement that has been in place since 1985. This item, I will just say, was passed by the RTM at their last meeting. The, we did take it up at the board, last, at the previous Board of Selectmen. Selectman Dunbar had requested that the Solid Waste Commission review the proposal, which they ended up, I know Selectman Dunbar wasn't at the meeting, but for the record, the Solid Waste Commission did take this item up yesterday, last night, and they voted unanimously in favor of the agreement. And Mark Bobbin, who is actually on the line tonight, was in attendance at the previous meetings and explained the agreement. So I will put that forward in a form of a motion.
I will second that, Selectman Dunbar, and I want to thank the selectman for indulging me and having the gentleman speak to those boards so they could get a little bit of information prior to our vote. So thank you.
All right, any, spin move and second, any further discussion?
I have a comment, please.
Sure, go ahead.
As you know, and I will have both committee meetings in at the RTM. And let me just correct Selectman Dunbar. I don't think you were indulged at all. I think this is the process that should have been in place from the beginning. And like so many things in this town, the process, in my opinion, and I think other people felt the same way, was not followed. For an agreement like this, which is so important to the solid waste business in this town, not to go just by a matter of routine in front of the Solid Waste Commission, I think something is sorely lacking. In addition, people on the RTM were complaining that they didn't see it. And I think Selectman Dunbar, if not mistaken, he didn't see it. So, you know, if this were an isolated incident, I probably wouldn't say anything. But there's so many things like this in this town that is just assumed like, okay, well, the selectman, the first selectman will act on it. That's enough. Well, no, it's not enough. It's not enough at all. And if you go to the proper channels, in this case particularly to the Solid Waste Commission, certainly to the RTM and their committees, they should see it well ahead of time. And, you know, I'm sure the agreement's fine, if everybody said it's fine. But again, should not be on the second selectman to ask for this to happen. Should be a matter of routine.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Just a matter of clarification, though. It did go through the process in terms of all the RTM members had received. It was part of the agenda that went out admittedly by some members of the RTM. They had not reviewed it prior to their meeting, their subcommittee meeting. But it was circulated to the full RTM and all members as well as it was circulated to Selectman Dunbar, I think, the, prior to our meeting. So I just wanted to clarify the fact that the full document was circulated to those that were the authorities in ultimately voting for this resolution and entering into this agreement. Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Follow through on that. Again, if that were the case, then you had a number of RTM members that were complaining about the process, that they didn't get it in time, perhaps. Maybe you circulated, but they didn't see it or get it in time. Now, as far as Selectman Dunbar goes, I can't speak for him. I thought he said he didn't see it. Maybe I was mistaken. And again, it does not dismiss the fact that the key commission on this whole issue, the Solid Waste Commission, did not see it at all until, you know, it was asked that, that they do. So I mean, again, you could, you can go back and forth all day long. But the issue is that people were, I think complaining is a fair word, that they didn't see it for whatever reason.
Thanks for your comment. I'm just stating the record, we're going to clarify that didn't see it isn't accurate. All right, so we'll take it to a vote. There's no other comments? All right, Selectman Cosgrove, aye.
Selectman Dunbar, aye.
The motion passes. Thank you. To consider and if, thank you, Mark, for attending once again.
Mark Bobbin, thank you to the town of Branford and the first selectmen and members of the Board of Selectmen and the public.
Right. To consider and if appropriate approve a four-year lease agreement between the town of Branford and American Capital for 1,000 Chromebooks. I believe we have Anne Marie Ryan on the line for representing the Board of Education, who will speak this. I'll just, matter of process, put that forward in a form of a motion.
Selectman Dunbar, second.
Put the second in. Emery, do you want to touch upon this agreement?
I'm sure. So as stated in the agenda, we're looking to get 1,000 Chromebooks for the use of students, especially in the current climate of distance learning. $335,000 of capital has been approved. So we're just trying to move this forward so that we can ensure, given some of the delays that are going on with the technology supply chain, that we can get these in time.
Thank you, Emery. And I just would like for the public to know and others on this meeting, this was a, the lease agreement was a part of a tech plan, I believe, that was adopted by the Board of Education, as well as went through the Board of Finance and even the RTM through the budget process. So these funds are budgeted. They have a technology plan to meet the technology needs even prior to what we're dealing with now, COVID. Branford was in a fortunate position that we were in, that we started to implement this technology a lot sooner than many other communities and put us in a strong position to make this transition dealing with the pandemic that we're dealing with, distance learning. Flex learning, I should refer to as. Spin move the second. Any further discussion?
I just have one question for Emery. How many, will this bring us up to now 2,000 Chromebooks? And the reason I ask that is because apparently we had already approved the lease last year for 1,000. So is this an addition, just to build on, so every student will ultimately have one?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Question, please.
Yeah, Wayne, I know it's you, but just for now, just state your name prior to.
Wayne Cook. Just to follow up to this second selectman's question. There are, if I'm not mistaken, there's like 3,000 kids in the school system, am I right? Or give or take?
Yeah, some already have their own devices. So this was estimated to be the amount that we would need in order to make sure that all students were connected.
And that's fair. But I guess my question is, what's the criteria as to which students receive a Chromebook and which ones don't? Do you find that most students supply their own and then, I mean, if I were given a free Chromebook, I would take it. But, you know.
Sure. So the way that we handled it, when, again, I'm going to reference back to the COVID situation. We just asked that students and parents let us know if they would need a Chromebook and depending on the number of students in the family, how many? As far as whether or not students have their own laptop, I think that is a personal choice within the family.
Okay. And then just one more question, just out of curiosity. I'm not questioning the Board of Ed's decision. But these stick around for like four years. Am I right about that?
Yes.
And then you trade them back in and then we get, is that how that works?
Yes, essentially, just to keep up with the way, how quickly software develops and, you know, how long these companies are willing to support the technology for. Four years is kind of the optimal range balancing the support and financial obligations.
I was going to ask that because I heard some, or maybe in the old days of the computers, that computers usually go through a change in about 18 months. I don't know if that's still accurate, but I was just wondering why you picked four years. That's fine. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, any further comments? All right, Selectman Cosgrove, aye.
Selectman Dunbar, aye.
I'm, passes. Thank you, Anne Marie.
Thank you.
All right. Item four, to consider and if appropriate approve a request from Dan Gregory, Superintendent WPCF, to waive an informality with the bid proposal submitted for septic tank pump-out services for fiscal year 2021 and award the contract to Whitfield Sanitation Incorporated. We have Brian Devlin on the phone, on the call to explain this. Just a quick overview, this is, we're waiving an informality. There was a, the non collusion form that is a part of every bid package. Although it was signed by the contractor, it wasn't notarized. I would just say, we only had one bid on this product, on this service. And it is our current vendor. If I'm not, I believe I'm correct in that. But that's, we're here really because of that one form that wasn't notarized. And I'll put that forward in a form of a motion, this item. Ray, do you want to second it?
I'll second that.
All right, so moved the second. And Brian, is there anything you'd like to add to this?
Yes, Jamie, we've been using the company the last few years. They've been very reliable. They did go up $11.50, but we did the budget this past year. We, we, we have the funds for that. And they've been, any problems with a resident, they pump out, we call them up, and they do take care of the problem for us. So we're happy with them for the service that they do.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion, comments? All right, Selectman Cosgrove, aye.
Selectman Dunbar, aye.
Thanks, Brian.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Item five, to consider and if appropriate approve the following resolution. Affordable Housing Plan Planning Grant. Board of Selectmen met on June 17th, 2020 and adopted a resolution by the vote of, if this passes. Authorizes submission of the town of Branford Affordable Housing Planning Grant Application in accordance with planning grants for thriving Connecticut communities. Affordable Housing Plan Technical Assistance Program Request for Applications. Authorizes the individual serving as first selectman or their successor, successors, to sign the grant application and sign any other documents associated with administering the grant, if awarded, including any amendments thereto. Authorizes the individual serving as the plow, as the town planner or their successor to administer the grant program on behalf of the town of Branford. I'll move this forward in form of a motion.
I'll second it.
Move the second, and we have Town Planner Harry Smith to speak on this. Harry?
Hi, Town Planner Harry Smith. This requirement for an affordable housing plan is actually part of state statute, a change that was enacted in 2017. As far as I know, there's really no penalty to not do it. And there have been very few towns that I'm aware of that have completed a plan to date. There's only three that I'm aware of. My understanding is that the state to spur development of the plans announced a planning grant program earlier this year, providing $15,000 maximum per municipality for any municipality with a population of less than 50,000. State is also contracted with a consulting firm to develop some guidance in terms of what should be contained within these plans. That's been one of the big questions. I think the towns have been reluctant to do them because they knew some guidance was possibly coming and nobody really knew what the plan should cover. So hopefully that guidance will be produced in time, assuming we do go ahead and apply for a grant and get the funding and undertake the plan. So we'll be able to do it according to the criteria issued by the state or will be issued by the state. So we're hoping to apply for the grant. It does require the proposed resolution that, that Selectman Cosgrove read, to be adopted by the Board of Selectmen that would authorize the submission of the grant application. So it's just that simple.
And Harry, is my understanding that having a plan in place, as you mentioned, is part of the state statute, I believe adapted in 2017. But in terms of municipalities, we know that there's always the, there's the 830G statute, which municipalities with under 10% of affordable housing are subject to a development, an 830G development. Where essentially a developer can come in and basically file an 830G application. And local zoning regulations don't necessarily apply to that regulate, to that develop. Having a plan in place where certainly doesn't, there's still the 830G option. But as you start to move forward in more of a proactive or planned approach to meet the affordable housing issues, having a plan in place increases your points or to show that you're potentially, I know other municipalities, and there's probably only six that have reached the, where they've increased so much that they're able to have a moratorium. But, but the plan is a component of that or would help us go to that direction.
I think it certainly would. Again, Harry Smith, Town Planner. There's nothing concrete in the statute. I mean, the requirement for the plan is actually a part of Section 830 of state statutes. But I think it's the way to go to create this opportunity to sort of proactively address the issue. And that can only help us in the future with future 830G applications and also address the issue of affordable housing in general, which I think is something, you know, the town really should be doing. It's a part of the plan of conservation development. And I know you're in a couple of meetings of this regional affordable housing. I don't know if that's what it's really called, but planning group. And, you know, it's an opportunity to be proactive.
All right, I just have one quick question, if you could. Can you just kind of tell us so everyone knows how we utilize the funds over time, consulting, putting the plan together, so forth?
My intention would be to hire a consulting firm to do it. I'm hoping to try to augment this with a little more money, if I can find some somewhere. There would be some staff time spent on this. One of the main efforts I see in the budget I sent along is some public engagement, which I think this provides the opportunity to have happen. You know, we're certainly going to need to do some analysis. I mean, there's a little bit that was done in the plan of conservation development so we can take that analysis a step further and look at some things that have been done in the regional level and try to get a better picture of, of what's been happening with housing in the town. And move ahead with, you know, a more cohesive planned approach.
Right, thank you.
Thanks, Harry. Any more, any questions?
I have a comment and question. How much is the grant for? Did you get it?
$15,000.
All right, you know, for what it's worth. I mean, we got a $120 million budget. And we can't spring for $15,000 to do this on our own in addition to everything else that has to be done to analyze and plan for affordable housing? I mean, the way I understand it, and I'm not, you know, on top of it, which a lot of people are. But, you know, there's a real question as to what the actual inventory of affordable housing is in this town. Some people say, well, the condominium, some condominiums should count. Some people say, well, some mobile homes should count. Some people say that some of them seek under the, through the cracks. And there are homes that are out there that should be labeled affordable housing that are not. And this all relates, as you all know, to the 830G statute, which, I mean, I've been on both sides of it, you know, based upon, you know, the former Tabor situation and now, you know, the Parkside Village and all that. But what I think is important to say is that the 830G can easily and has been used as a form of a, I won't say a weapon, but close to it by developers. I mean, it's a statute that allows you to come in and if you put up a certain amount of affordable housing, you will get your development in place. Well, that's where the 10% comes in. So the question becomes, and I think I'm asking this on behalf of citizens that maybe couldn't be here tonight, is how close are we to that 10% to preclude us from falling underneath the 830G? I mean, are we 6%? Could we be, you know, higher? And again, I think it's extremely important that we shell out 15,000 and then some to, you know, look at the inventory and establish a plan for this community. Because with all respect to the town planner, I know the plan of conservation and development process about as well as anybody. And they don't analyze things thoroughly. There's no way. I mean, they're not working on it that long. The, the plan is too vast. Everything from the environment, the housing, to economic development. So of course we need a more in-depth analysis. So I would highly encourage, and I should say this in closing, that 830G, you know, is in front of the RTM for analysis. And are there strategies this town could take? I think there probably are. Other towns have taken them. In addition to the Parkside Village complex and that what's going on down there. So there will be analysis, and I think we should take a proactive approach in a general approach and just get on top of this affordable housing issue.
Well, I think that's, Harry might answer the questions, specific questions. But I believe that is the intent of this process that is being laid out by the town planner. But I don't know, Harry, if you want to address any of the specific points.
Again, Harry Smith, Town Planner. We are way under the 10%. We're about 3.2 something percent. Now, what's considered affordable under the specific definitions of that section of the state law are very narrow. Various folks have been lobbying for changes to that statute. A couple have been enacted over the years. And one of the things actually recommended in the plan is that we seek some credit for other forms of affordable housing that are present in the community that are not necessarily deed restricted per se. There may be units that exist. For example, the mobile home parks that are affordable, but they're not counted because there's no deed restriction that requires them to stay affordable per se. So it's a very complicated section of state law. And I think no matter what we do, we're probably going to be under the 10% unless they vastly change the rules. And that has not happened to date. But I do think it's something that we can certainly, I'm looking forward to spending some time on to try and bring some focus to and do the best we can with it.
And you know, just Wayne Cook again, and that's fine. I mean, no problem with that. But I would just encourage you to, you know, instead of waiting around for a grant of $15,000 to come in to, you know, let's put the $15,000 up on our own or whatever, maybe apply. I mean, my, my whole point is now, I'm sorry, my whole point is the time is now. Time's now to get this done. We can't keep kicking the, you know, the can down the road. Because affordable housing, the 830G is an extremely, as you said, complex. But it's also an extremely tricky issue and one that the town really has to come to terms with. Or else, you know, the town's going to fall victim, as many have. And quite frankly, I think that some would argue we have.
Well, I don't disagree with that, but I just would also note that we certainly want to meet the requirement laid out in state statute for having the plan accomplished, because we're required to do it technically. And there will be guidance forthcoming from the state to specify what the plan should contain and address. So I think the timing actually is right. Yeah, I, you know, in terms of the grant. And we certainly could use all the free money we can get. There's no need to spend what taxpayers money. We can spend state funds to accomplish something we need to accomplish.
Thank you. Any more, any other comments? All right, First Selectman Cosgrove, aye.
Sixth Selectman Dunbar, aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks, Harry. Item six, appointments. Parks and Open Space Authority, Wesley Beaman, to fill a vacancy left by Craig Cioci, term to expire June 30th, 2022. I put that forward in a form of a motion?
I'll second it.
Second discussion. All right. Selectman Cosgrove votes in favor, aye.
Selectman Dunbar votes in favor, aye.
All right, we do not have any other reappointments or other appointments. Item seven, there's no reappointments. Item eight, any other business?
Some questions, please.
Sure.
As the first selectman knows, I was at the Economic Development Meeting this morning and I was disillusioned and to a large extent disgusted by the fact that the chairman did not allow me to address every agenda item, which has always been the practice in the past, that citizens can do that. Now, here's the point. I mean, I can take it up with the Economic Development Commission in the future. But, you know, these Zoom things are very convenient because they can mute you and whatever. And I mean, I think they took advantage of that as well. But here's my point. There's a number of issues in this town that need to be resolved. And to the RTM's credit, they put a number of them on the agenda the other night. And we have petitions to do the other ones. But I think it's extremely important, and I'm addressing this, this whole community, but certainly to the first selectman, because you could have overruled them this morning and you didn't. I mean, they serve at, I guess it's called your pleasure, the economic development. But you must let citizens speak. You know, you must let them speak. And I said this morning, and I meant this sincerely, that, you know, the citizens fighting for the right to speak at the last administration, you know, with all respect to your own abilities, and you do have, you know, your own abilities, is one of the reasons that that administration is no longer here and that you are. So I would think if anyone supported the citizen's right to speak, however much they want to, within reason, it would be you and your administration. That said, you know, there are the issues to go over. I don't necessarily have to go over them tonight because they will be heard in the RTM. But I am concerned about two things in particular. One is the Tabor issue. And I said this morning, when I could speak, that it's my opinion, and I think the opinion of others, first selectman, that you're in essence giving that 70 acres away. And, you know, I don't believe that it's, the Greenway Trail went before the RTM. Your assistant is looking into it, but initially there was no indication of that. You got the other trails on there now. You got the labyrinth on there now. And if you keep on doing those kinds of things, although they seem, you know, attractive at the time, that 70 acres is no longer available to us. Because people aren't even going to know it's available. Because, oh, that's where the labyrinth is. We can't touch that. Or that's where. So I'd like you to address that first, please. What is the deal with Tabor? What are your intentions on Tabor? What happened to the master plan that you know and I know was in discussions several years ago before you took office? What's going on with Tabor?
Okay, I, before I address that, I'm going to address the first comment and that, you know, I've, I've never. That, you know, I've, I've never, I welcome, I welcome the discussion. I don't think there's been a resident that I've ever. Denied making a comment and. So, so I think, you know, that. That that should be recognized and acknowledged on your part that. I I welcome the a open dialogue and even the fact that you mentioned about the petitions that. Are placed on the agenda for the RTM while I was here and on the RTM where we. Created that ordinance, giving the. The residents the ability to petition an item onto the agenda. And I remain supportive and have remained supportive all along for that. Process to happen and for things to be. So now moving on to your.
Excuse me, as long as you jump into the next issue, you're right. I'm not, I I didn't say you per se. I mean, I remember the history as well as you do, and it was. Myself and a few other citizens that pushed the petition process through and then to your credit and others, it went through. I understand that. What I'm saying was that in a situation like the EDC this morning, Economic Development, I think you could have intervened and say, you know. Why don't you let Cook talk? Why don't you let Cook talk for a couple of minutes? And you didn't do it. Now, you don't do it here. I mean, there's no problem here. I mean, I'm willing to admit that freely, but. In a situation like that, I think you could have done because they're your commission. That is your personal commission.
Okay. And with the Tabor. The, the, as far as giving away, and I'm more than happy to have a discussion and even further beyond this, but. You know, what we've created on that, the Shoreline Greenway Trail is still a town trail. It's still in, and. Again, looking through the records, there was a public hearing on that, public information meeting on that or public hearing. A the notice, a legal notice went out regarding that project. Letters went out through the engineering office or through the to the abutters of the property. So that project itself. It came before the Board of Selectmen, was voted on by the Board of Selectmen, went to the Planning and Zoning Commission for an eight twenty-four referral. Now, it may not have, and again, I do recall. RTM members speaking or questioning the project. Now, in terms of. You know, in actual action by the RTM at a meeting. I don't know. I can't recall off the top of my head if it actually did, but as I think about it. There wasn't any local funding for that project. It was state fund, a federal funding and. And and funding that the Shoreline Greenway Trail contributed to it. So therefore there wasn't an appropriation in place. That would required the RTM approval on it.
Excuse me, but that's not true.
That is true.
No, 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 hang on a second. You know, and I know, in fact, you should know better than I know. That the RTM for any parcel of land. Whether it's an easement, whether it's for a transfer, whether it's for sale or whatever, they have to be involved.
Correct. And we didn't transfer. Yeah, no, I agree. And not that we agree on the set of facts, but there, so the the property did not transfer. It did not, we did not create an easement. As I stated in the beginning, it is a town. Trail is a town owned trail.
Excuse me a second. I I don't mean to interrupt, but. It's my understanding, and I could stand corrected. That there is an easement for that trail.
I I do not believe we had a file in easement. I did not, I'll, I'll verify that, but I don't. I I think, and I think that question did get asked, Wayne, if we were to sell, ever sell the property. Would we still, what would we do? And I think there was a comment by the town engineer at the time saying, well, at that point, then we would probably. File an easement on the record. I don't believe, because like I said, with the town owns the trail. We wouldn't, we didn't place it on our, in. On our own property.
But the town owns the trail.
Owns the property.
Owns the property, but the state funded the trail.
Yeah, but we, they didn't require, they didn't require an easement in.
That's what I'm not sure, that's what I'm not sure.
And I'll verify that, that there wasn't, I did not come across anything that required.
You know, okay, that's fine. Now, what about the other things going on there? In other words, the perpendicular trail up to Chet's.
So, so I don't, the, the, that is the Shoreline Greenway Trail, Wayne. Is the, is the one that runs perpendicular to Chet's Pond.
No, it's not. The Shoreline Greenrail Trail runs along the south and then, as you mentioned, and then it hooks up to the north.
No.
If you start over.
No, no. No, I I'd be more than happy to meet with you or go over.
I know it is. I know it well. I mean, I'm not, you know.
It, it, the Shoreline Greenway Trail, it runs on the northern edge of the property.
Starting at Pine Orchard Road.
Starting at Pine Orchard Road.
And then it hooks down.
It runs, it runs parallel to Chet's Pond.
Okay, Breezely. And then it goes down.
Runs the full, full length of it.
It runs down to, goes down to the south and then it hugs the south border along the solar, whatever, all the park road. It does, I saw. I wish I had the map in front of me because I could show it to you. And then there's another trail. That is, looks like it's secondary to the Shoreline Trail that goes perpendicular up to the pond. And then that's where the labyrinth shoots off of. So I mean, we should look at it. We should look at it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll have to look at because, you know what I'll do is I think you have this, we have this on the agenda for the RTM. I'll, I'll bring it in overview. Of the property because. You're incorrect with the, your trails.
No, I'm not, but we'll listen. Facts are fact.
Not trying to win you over. I'm just.
I mean, maybe we're interpreting it differently, but I saw what I saw. I mean, I know where a trail goes. I mean, and it listed quite clearly. Shoreline Greenway Trail. There's no mistake of that. So let's look at it. We'll look at it. I'll bring it to the next meeting and you do the same. The other thing is I'd like to mention, and then I'll let it go. I'm not going to go through every single item here. But, you know, you know, and I know that the Costco situation ended badly for everybody. And you did promise, you did promise, and I have the articles. That we were going to have an investigation as to what really happened there. And nobody's ever seen it. Other than the fact that, well. It's a letter drafted by drafted keyword, drafted by one of the, you know, town attorneys. And nobody can see it because it's a draft. You can't get it under freedom. Point is this, Costco and the lawsuit and everything aside, I mean, I understand the sensitivity of that. Where's that investigation?
We did look into it. I did have an attorney look.
Where is it?
Particular. It, it was, he was drafting, we met, and then I said, there's. In terms of. You know, there was accusations of for a town employee as well as. Commissioner, I I looked into it and. Whereas at that point with the town employee, it's a personnel issue. And, you know, that is, that is.
It's not a personnel issue.
Yeah, it is.
No, it's not. It's not. It's not because quite frankly, and I already put, and your, your assistant will know this, and I haven't gotten it yet. I put an FOI in for, you know, Diana Ross's personnel file, which were intended, I mean, what you're, we're able to do, and I haven't gotten it yet. But you can't hide behind this being a personnel issue because what does that mean? I mean, that means a town employee can commit some crime. And which this was, I mean, I call it freely fraud, what they did, and I don't think many people would disagree if they really saw the facts. Your own pal. Mazakane. He came out, he was the one that discovered the whole thing. Corruption, lies, everything. I could pull out the articles. And now all of a sudden he goes around saying, no, there was no corruption. There were no lies. Well, what the hell happened between then? And when he said it, I mean, the point is, I think. Lawsuit aside. That you and your administration have serious things to answer to. Because that is the reason we lost Costco. We didn't lose Costco despite the fact that you say that Cook wanted too much money. That is so lame. You said it, and I wrote you letters to that effect, and you go ahead and you tell your people and they believe. I know it's the fact. People tell me you said that. So my point is this, and I'm going to switch over to the second selectman. He ran on the basis, or one of the things he said. We're going to find out whether those corrupt town hall corrupt signs are accurate. Well, you know, second selectman, I can't think of a better time than now. You know, if you meant what you said, why don't you go figure?
You're going to let me talk for a second? Because we talked in the past. I've already asked. For. Whether or not the draft was put into an actual formal letter. I did not get a reply. As to this date, but I believe the selectman is, is basically saying now, I don't think it ever got put into a. A a formal letter. It just stayed in the draft. Based on whatever you saw. You can speak for yourself. So, so I did ask for that. Did I run on the fact that I didn't like those signs? Yes, I did. I still don't like them. And I would like to get to the bottom of issues, but. If it's a personnel issue they're saying, then we have to get past that because I have no way of changing that. I can't get past the attorney. I've asked many questions to many people and they're all in kind of the same boat you are. There's no firm lockdown. You know, information that they can give me. And I tried, so to some extent I have to, I have to look to the first selectman to see if there is closure. If it's a personnel issue. You say you just FOied it. Get the information. Let me see it. I'm not afraid to talk about it. But I've kind of run into the same things you have is that. There's no information readily available that will clear up anything one way or the other. And yes, I read the same article that you did that got put out by the seven and I have it. But, you know, some, I've never talked to him either in all fairness to, to see, you know, where his stand on that is, and I will. You know, when this pandemic is over. I think one on one is the best way to do it. So, so it's not for lack of trying, but I will tell you this, I have not uncovered anything for either side at this point in time to give any conclusions. And that's frustrating, but it is what it is.
With all respect, I mean, come on. I mean, I gave you about a half inch, three quarter inch booklet. That outlined everything, including, including, including the peer review that was. Added, you know, tampered with and, and basically fraud was committed. You saw that.
I did see it, Wayne.
And Diana Ross's handwriting all over it. So my point is this, and I, can I speak now or do you have something? If you have something more to say, it's fine.
Well, I have to say is that it, it, it's not easy just to give you a straight answer based on what you provided to me. I've looked at it. I've tried to run it down and still will be trying to run it down. Pandemic didn't help matters any, but. You certainly have your side. I read it. It reads credible, but that doesn't mean that I have anything that can say one way or the other, and that's what I'm looking for.
Well, I think that someone, particularly the second selectman in this town, can see that draft. If it even exists. And I think you should start right there. As far as.
Ask for it.
As far as a personnel issue goes, you're not entitled to second selectman to see, you know, the, the personnel issues and, and the various information on that.
But I don't believe I am. I don't believe I am because everything goes through the first selectman. He's the CEO of the town and, and. And so there are obstacles that aren't easily cleared up. I went into roadblocks just like everybody else, but I haven't stopped looking.
Fine. And if the RTM demanded to see that draft, they could see it. The RTM even controls the Board of Selectmen. Now, don't tell me that they don't.
Well, they don't, they don't, they do not control the Board of Selectmen, but they do are the legislative body for all of the rules and the stuff.
Fine. And one last thing, as far as a personnel issue goes. I've said from the start and I will always say, this is not a personnel issue as much as it. That it's an issue of. Compromise and then some of the regulatory process. That's what this was. Now, is the town? Is the town? Responsible for ensuring a fair regulatory process or isn't it? Depending, I mean, regardless of whether the, the various personnel. Influenced it or, or, or tampered with it or not. You must, it's the process. You must guarantee citizens a fair regulatory process. And I'll tell you right now, if you even came close to reading what I gave you, and I'm sure you did. That did not happen. That did not happen.
It, it's a matter of coming into a, a conclusion that all of the town can see. We're working on it. I'm working on it. And I would like to see if there was a, a final report done that wasn't a draft myself, but I did ask and, and to date, I have not gotten that answer, but the pandemic. Not as an excuse, did kick in after I asked for it, so getting it may not have been that easy.
But if they had something, if, one, one last point, if they have something, meaning the first selectman and his administration have something significant to show us. And that it showed clearly that there was no wrongdoing. They would be marching it up and down Main Street with the fife and drum corps behind, but no. They're not. And there's a reason for that because I don't even think that draft exists.
We'll find out.
We'll find out.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, with that, I'll take a, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second select, Dunbar second sit.
All right, hold on, favor say aye, aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Harry. Good night.